All right, at this time, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Let the record reflect it, it's Tuesday, July 20th. It is 6:18 PM. The village board would like to welcome everyone to this committee of the whole meeting at the fire station 46. Please keep in mind that this is a public safety facility and at any time emergencies can come in. The alarm will sound and the meeting will pause while the fire department personnel respond to the emergency. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation and publicly Act 101-0640, which amends requirements to the Open Meetings Act due to COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option, the board members are all present minus trustee Mueller, which I don't believe he will be phoning in. Thus, we do not need to confirm the audio. All the materials for this meeting are available on the village's website and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. For all items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will forward the public comment as follows. Once I, the chair, have a list of all public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time up to an additional three minutes may be granted by motion of the village board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to clerksoffice@Tilling Park dot org or by placing their written request in the dropbox at Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the meeting. The public was provided the opportunity to submit written comments until noon today by emailing their comments to clerksoffice@TillingPark.org or by placing their written comment in the dropbox at Village Hall. Written comments will not be read aloud, and finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller is absent. Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Glatz.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number two, consider approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on June 29th, 2021. Is there such a motion? Trustees Mahoney and Brady?
Yes. Roll call for item number two, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to skip item number three for right now, moving on to item number four. Consider a class, consider a class eight request for Imagine Aspen LLC, 6851 167th Street.
Um, tonight we have Imagine Aspen, who has a contract, first offer a property at 851 167th Street. And the property consists of a one-story office building, which has been vacant since 2019. And the applicant is looking to make a significant investment in our community of about $400,000 to retrofit the interior space to build out 23-style salon suites, install a sprinkler system, as well as add some landscaping around the building exterior. Imagine Aspen has 45 years of retail experience and is co-owner of a 25-suite salon building in Plainfield, Illinois, which is currently fully leased since opening last year. It is expected that 19 full-time jobs and eight part-time jobs will be created as a result of this project. But for the applicant getting a request from the village to submit to the Cook County for class eight incentive, this project would not be feasible. Essentially, the class eight incentive will allow the tax assessment from the commercial rate of 25% to the residential rate of 10%. This area is designated as a blighted area and therefore is eligible for this class eight request upon approval of the village board. The incentive policy checklist is that this project will create at least 25 jobs, as well as benefits to the community as it will be taking a vacant building, bringing new tenants to it, as well as improving the exterior, interior, and creating 27 jobs, one fully operational. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed the application at its July 12th, 2021 meeting, and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the class eight request. Staff requests for the committee of the whole to move this request for consideration at the village board meeting held later this evening. We do have representatives here from the applicant if anyone has any specific questions.
Any questions from the board? No questions? Motion to move it to the village board meeting. Is there such a motion?
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have a second?
A second.
Trustee Sullivan, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number four, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion will carry. Very good. Thank you very much, Kimberly. Item number five, consider a class eight request for Mira Real Estate LLC, 6775 Prosperity Drive.
Thank you, trustee Brennan. Dr. Chris Higgins of Mira Real Estate LLC has recently purchased the site at 6775 Prosperity Drive. This property consists of 63,000 square feet of building, which was formerly occupied by a not-for-profit organization that relocated elsewhere in the community. The owner is proposing to invest $6 million in improvements to the building in order to operate a Mira Neuro Behavioral Health Center for children and adolescents that will consist of a 30-bed acute care psychiatric hospital. Dr. Chris Higgins has identified a need in the community for acute care resources for youth struggling with mental health issues. It is expected that 30 full-time jobs and 15 part-time jobs will be created as a result of this project. When fully operational, that number will increase to 50 to 70 jobs, including psychiatrists, psychologists, nurses, general office staff, and maintenance staff. Construction is expected to commence summer of 2021 with a completion estimate of six to eight months there after. The property, once fully renovated, is estimated to be valued at approximately, generate approximately $450,000 a year in taxes with the incentive. The applicant is requesting a class eight in order to reduce the taxes from the commercial tax of 25% to 10%, but for this class eight, this project would not be feasible. The incentive policy checklist is that this project will create at least 25 jobs and it will meet the minimum capital investment policy requested of at least $1 million. The benefits to the community is that it will enhance the village by improving a property, which also will allow for the property to be back on the tax rolls, and it will result in an increase of 50 to 70 permanent jobs. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed the application at its July 12th, 2021 meeting, and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the class eight. Staff requests for the committee of the whole to move this site, this item forward for consideration at the village board later this evening. We also have representatives here tonight if there's any questions on the Mira project.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any questions from the board on this item?
Sure.
How many jobs?
Um, when completed, it will, it'd be about 50 to 70 permanent jobs when fully operational.
Thank you.
New jobs are always good. Do we have any, any requests or any concerns about what this may do for any, from a police and fire aspect, anything like that?
I'm sorry? Just like in general?
Yeah, yeah, just in general.
Or five?
Okay. Very good. All right, I'd like to make a motion to move item number five to the village board meeting. Do I have a second?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
I'm sorry, trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
All right. I know, uh, is there electric aggregation program?
Yep, I will take one. Thank you, trustee Brennan. I'll keep it short, this is our third time talking about electric aggregation, so not too much has changed in terms of the program offerings. We have just received final pricing, so we just wanted to give you the final options that have been presented to us. If the board wishes to, we could stay with MC Squared and receive a $42,000 civic contribution. If we want to switch over to Elgo Energy, they are offering for a 0% green energy, $70,000 contribution, and if there's any desire to maintain some level of green energy, we could go for 50% green energy at $53,000 as a civic contribution. So just looking for some final input on whether we want to stay with MC Squared or make the switch over to Elgo.
Any questions from the board? So certainly there's a big difference between dual, $30,000. Why is that?
There's a lot of moving pieces. There's been some changing, there's been some changes in the market, the way that our consultant, NYMEC, has presented it to us. Some unexpected changes, and they're not entirely positive if it's due to COVID, or if it's just something that's going to continue on moving forward. And so I think with that uncertainty, you know, MC Squared is just being a little more conservative versus where Elgo feels pretty comfortable, you know, offering a little bit more.
I don't really think on this, you know, the additional, uh, resident, the additional program, uh, to, uh, water pumps. Is there, is there, you know, an accommodation from the commission that's, that's, say, what?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, the Environmental Commission, you know, as long as their, their understanding of the changes, like, you know, this is our third time talking about it because things continue to change, so, you know, as long as we continue to, like you said, you know, maybe put some of this civic contribution towards charging stations, water pumps, or some sort of a sustainable project, I think they'd be happy with that. You know, at the end of the day, if the choice is to go with some level of green energy, great, but, you know, really whatever the board sees fit.
So I guess I, for you guys, I didn't mean this for, um, the, the set for, um, the additional, I think the bridge of that is local. You may not see, you may not, with the green energy logo, or, or website, you may not recognize for the green energy, but we did more, um, the additional items on that, that's down there. Yeah, the additional, okay, so I'm pretty, I like the additional ones as well. I guess, we're gonna, this, you know, I don't like the, the, you know, I guess, it won't be the worst case scenario of building, building a separate way of, so, I guess it's something that's, you know, technically workable or, you know, something that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, our consultant has said that either way, you know, we can't really go wrong. We're, we're used to MC Squared and the way they operate, but you know, there's, they haven't had any concerns with Elgo. If we do make the change, residents, there will be a mass mailing that goes out to everyone in the program, which is okay, you know, we have calls that will come into Village Hall, but nothing that we haven't handled before, so that's really just the big change. Uh, it'll be a one-year contract. Again, with the changes, there's just a lot of, you know, uncertainty moving forward, so it'll just be 12 months.
Your motion to, uh, to move it to the board? Yes. Yeah, your motion, so, okay.
Wait, what's the motion?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we have a motion, one, oh, second up, what's that? Oh, second up, Elgo, Elgo, then, same thing, is that, same thing, you call, okay. Is there a second for Elgo?
Is there's no more, and nobody else thinks it's important to stay with, you know, the green energy to, I mean, that's what that group has recommended, correct?
The Environmental Commission, is that what you're referring to?
Right.
I mean, at the end of the day, yes, they'd like to see some level, but again, their understanding of the trade-off if we were willing to put some of the civic contribution towards sustainable projects.
Okay. Do we have to, uh, do we want to earmark that or is it, is it, we just could have done?
Correct.
So, so if they're okay with that, as long as we're, you know, towards renewable energies and, you know, wherever, maybe.
Yep.
All right, so, I believe there's a motion down there, just in your, trustee Brady, for Elgo, that's second for that? Yes, correct, I'll second, okay. Madam Clerk, please move the roll.
Roll call for item number six, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Okay, that motion carries. Item number seven, consider exceptions to section 2.11 of the Personnel Manual, dual capacity employment.
Sure, thank you, trustee Brennan. We have an unusual provision in our personnel code that if someone holds two positions, the board technically has to approve them, kind of an antiquated section that goes way back, but until we change that, there are a couple requests that we have. Colby Zemitis, as you know, has been our village engineer for a few years. He was recently promoted to the Assistant Public Works Director. He's going to continue to hold the engineering title until that position's filled, so this is obviously a temporary situation. The other request, I think most of you know Roxanne Tyson, who is our Commission Secretary, and we also discussed several months ago hiring a part-time position in the clerk's office, and so Roxanne has done clerical work for us before, very ably and successfully. And so there's a request on the board agenda for both of these positions to essentially waive section 2.1 of the code prohibiting employees from holding two different positions.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Dave, you need a motion to move this one to the board, too?
Yes. Can I say something first?
Sure.
Yeah, so for some of the new board members, this is, this was done roughly, what, maybe four years ago with Pat Carr. He has multiple positions, too, within the village, and so we, we had to institute the dual-capacity employment. So Assistant Village Manager and our EMA Director. So just for somebody new guys, this isn't the first time this has been done.
Dave, just, can I ask a question?
Thank you, Bill.
So, but Colby is just part, is just temporary?
It's temporary, yes, until we fill the village engineer position.
Okay. I mean, do we know, right now, are there things getting held up with his time? Does, do building permits and that all flow through him?
Are building permits getting held up because of?
Because engineering, I mean, is Colby the only person that they would, he signs off on?
No, it's not affecting permits, you know, he always has the ability, as we often do, to use consulting engineers, you know, and he's using those, so no, that's, the fact that that position is vacant is not holding up permits.
Okay. And this is just a, his is just temporary, but we still have to go through this?
It's temporary, until we fill the village engineer position, which, you know, we'll have to see, it's obviously a very competitive environment now for professional positions, but the goal is to fill that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Bill, can I say something? John Urbanski, you, in the time being, you don't see a problem with Colby keeping up on everything, correct?
No, I've, I've been working closely with him, you know, and I'll make sure that any of the slack from the open positions is being handled. As the village manager stated, we do have the assistance of the consulting engineers that can help offset some of the, you know, things that we are trying to defer.
Great, thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Is there such a motion to move this item to the village board? Thank you, trustee Brady. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan.
Roll call for item number seven. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, consider hydrant painting contract. John, you want to take that?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a request for committee to approve a bid award to Crighton Enterprises out of Manuka this year. The only thing different about this hydrant painting project is that we have reduced our eight-year program to a four-year program, increasing the number of hydrants from 600 to 1,200. Crighton came in at $99,600 for the 1,200 hydrants, looking for a committee approval and move it to board.
Very good, thank you, John. Any questions from the board? There are none. Do I have a motion to move this item to the village board meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Mahoney?
Roll call for item number eight, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, consider post-three lift station pump replacement.
Sir, thank you. This is a request for the board to approve expenditure funds to replace two jacky pumps at post-three. There are three main pumps that will remain. The company Superior Pumping Services does maintain all of our lift station sites. It is a request for expenditure funds in the amount of $21,739.70 and additional request for committee approval for sole source with Superior Pumping and to move it to board.
Under budget, it's always good. Thank you, John. Is there such a motion to move this item to the village board?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second? Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number nine, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 10, consider purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. Chief, you want to take that?
Thank you. I'm requesting a purchase of 120 air bottles for our self-contained breathing apparatus. As you well know, back in January, we put in for a grant for $500,000 to replace all the complete units. As of today, we still have not heard if we are getting that grant, however, from what I've been hearing, they're giving it to smaller communities that, that need them a little bit more. We haven't got an official letter, but the bottles have expired at the end of June, so I'm requesting a purchase of 120 bottles, which will bring us up to the standard. The standard is 15 years, and the bottles cannot be used anymore, so I'm requesting that. It is a sole territorial purchase, which means MSA is, is the provider of the air bottles in this area. There are other companies that do, but they can't cross territorial, so that's why it's a, there's no price comparison to other, other companies.
Right.
And we, we actually came under budget, we came in about $78,000 versus the, as it was attached, had budgeted $100,000 for the bottles. Now, if we get these bottles next year, if we do not get the grant, my, I'll try for another grant to replace the whole air pack unit that doesn't expire, but it's not with the most recent, up-to-date features on it, I'll put in for that during the budget cycle next year. But the bottles will hold us to meet the standard that we need to comply with.
Right. Well, I know this was a, this was a large COVID cost-cutting cut that we, we had one year on budget last year and pushed it off for a little bit, so I appreciate you getting this done, and, um, under budget, it's always good, too, so, um, appreciate all your guys' work on this one, and I believe all of the surrounding communities around us use the same company.
Pretty much, yes, yes. It's a very, it's what we currently are using.
Right.
So it's just replacing the bottles we can. Unfortunately, 15 years is the expiration of the bottles, and they, they won't certify after that, so.
Right.
After it's something happened, it would be not a good thing, so, and then about four weeks delivery time, so that's not bad. I'll be getting it serviced.
Good. Very good, well, thank you, thank you, chief. I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to move this item to the village board. Do I have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, who, who is that? Sullivan, okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item 10.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Circling back to item number three, do you want to move forward that Pete's Fresh Market?
Hey, I do have some images in the back for those of you who might not be familiar with this location, but we're very happy to bring now to the public the Pete's Fresh Market project. The village staff and Pete's team have been working diligently over the last year and a half to make this project come to light, and it's a very exciting project, so I'm happy to, to present that. Back in August of 2020, the village board had a idea and a vision to stem some economic development in the corridor of Harlem Avenue, just south of 159th Street, by creating the TIF district. There are large shopping centers along this corridor that we knew were needing some significant investment, and but for an economic tool, it was, it was going to be a difficult task. So with this TIF, now, this is our second project that we're able to bring to the community and taking an old shopping center and bringing new life. The Pete's Fresh Market property, the community knows it formerly as the Kmart property located at 16300 South Harlem Avenue. The Pete's team purchased this property with intentions of redeveloping it. The project is actually broken up in three phases. The first phase, which is the former Kmart property that you see currently out there today, is being retrofitted for a warehouse. Pete's is expanding in the southern areas and identified this area for a need to provide their warehouse distribution to meet their stores in the southern area down here. That was approved back in September of 2020. Phase two, which is the incentive request, which is based on the construction of an 88,000-square-foot Pete's Fresh Grocery Store with another 51,000 square feet of inline-retail tenant space, with an additional expansion to the warehouse. The Kmart building used to have an outdoor garden area. They are planning to, you know, build that up so it'd be more additional warehouse and dock area. And then a third, last phase would be the potential outlots that can be developed along Harlem Avenue for future retail. The property did receive a 6B and 7B Cook County reclass back in May of 2020. Again, but for the reclass, it was going to be very difficult for the project to move forward with the, the way the property was going to be assessed and ultimately tasked. The next discussion then began with the Pete's construction, and with the TIF, that was our tool to see how this project can help hopefully get moving forward. There were some significant barriers to make this happen, so the TIF has been a critical tool. Essentially, the TIF is going to be, the agreement is a 10-year agreement, which is in compliance with our incentive policy. We did put some deadlines in that the completion date of the project being defined as the Pete's Grocery Store and the inline-retail being completed by December of 31, 2022. The agreement does allow for a one-year extension for any force majeure delays due to COVID. We already know that there are some issues that may cause delays. Because of COVID, there's been some difficulties in getting materials, but nonetheless, the Pete's team is dedicated to meeting this deadline as much as possible. The project cost is about $36.6 million, and the financial assistance is $5.5 million of TIF incentive, or 20% of the actual project cost, whichever is less. In order to ensure that the payback of 5.5 million will be completed in 10 years, the village incentive agreement is proposing an 80% share of that increment based on the percentage we believe that this project will get paid back in between eight and nine years. We did provide a look-back language in the agreement, which would commence on year six, in the event that available incre- year six. In the event that available increment, there was a concern that they might not get that, this year six allows for a consideration of the Village Board to make a modification to that available increment if needed to ensure that they get paid back by that 10 years. In addition, the Village added a clawback language that basically states that this property must be in operation of a grocery store for 10 years. In the event the store is to close prior to the 10 years, there's language in the agreement now that has a payback period going from year zero to 10. Pete's Fresh Market expects to generate 50 to 60 million in annual gross sales, and once this project is complete, they expect to hire 30 to 40 full-time employees for the distribution facility and approximately 170 for the supermarket. They expect the additional retail tenants to create 30 to 60 jobs and generate approximately 10 million in annual gross sales. The project will be an enhancement to the community. It will encourage development in the area that was considered blighted and will create over 200 jobs between all of the retail locations, distribution facility, and increased property tax values and sales tax revenue. It meets the incentive policy checklist by locating in an area that was previously designated as blighted. The project will create over 25 jobs. It's expected to exceed 1 million in capital investment, and the project has an annual retail sales of at least 5 millions outlined in section B5 of the incentive policy. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed the incentive request at July 12, 2020.
Thanks, Kimberly.
The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed this at the July 12, 2021, meeting and voted 7-0 to recommend approval. Staff request for the Committee to hold to move this item forward for consideration at the Village Board later this evening. I also, last night, sent an email to all the trustees, and it's also available, a hard copy. There was the agreement, only a minor change. We've been working diligently with the team and MWRD for their stormwater, so there was concerns about the construction date commencing in August. We've pushed that date to October. That's the only change in the agreement. In addition, there was a slight addition to the warehouse space specifically. They added some additional dock area. Nothing significant. It does not change the overall concept or impact any adjacent properties. Those were minor changes that we can also discuss later at Village Board upon review of their special use and site plan. This evening here, we have Stephanie Drumonis with Pete's Fresh Market, as well as Eugene here. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if they would like to add anything, they may as well, or I'll let Trustee Brennan.
Very good. Thank you, Kimberly. Appreciate the overview. Stephanie, did you want to address the Board? Did you want to add anything to what she said, or could you hear what she was saying?
I'm here to answer any questions, but I have to say, the team has worked like night and day to get us to this finish line, and I really appreciate all the extra effort, back and forth. You know, they definitely don't give anything away, so you can stand, you know, be assured that Kimberly and her team have really been with the mayor's help and assistance guiding us to this project. It's not going to be an easy ride. You know, a $40 million project is not something you just snap your fingers and you get. So I think everyone understanding this is a partnership has always been a reason why we chose Tinley Park to begin with. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I have my GC Eugene with us, so if it's construction-related, I can bounce it and pass it to him. If it's pizza market in general, I'm happy to answer anything, so I'll stand here.
Very good. Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any questions from the Board in regards to this item? Trustee Galante?
Thank you. Just to make sure, originally, it was special use for the warehouse. I know there were some neighbors around there that had concerns about the extra trucks that, you know, idling or fumes and then being parked back there. Has that all been with the neighbors? I mean, has that all been worked out?
I mean, we had the public hearing. The neighbors did express the concerns particularly with the proposed Pete's Grocery Store, because with that new construction, there's going to be a parking lot there. We can talk more about that with the site plan, but essentially, I think Pete's has provided information to demonstrate they're doing as best, whatever they can to mitigate those impacts. There's going to be a landscaping buffer. There's over, I think from the nearest bump out of the building, 130 feet from that building to the rear of that fence that is there today. With new construction, there's a lot more efficiencies, and the air handling units, I think, are operating at better levels and sound, and I think Eugene can speak more to that if he'd like. But I think overall, Pete's team and staff has tried to address as best as we can those concerns, but essentially, it is new construction. There will be some new activity there, but overall, we feel it'll be a great project.
I would say that construction's probably the most painful, you know, during that timeframe, but out of the 17 buildings that we operate now, more than half of them have a surrounding residential component, so they're typically our best customers because they can just walk over and they get to know our staff, and any complaints they address with us, and we try to mitigate. But for the most part, there's a screen wall, there's landscaping that, you know, anecdotally, from our previous experience, it hasn't really been an issue. And if there has been, we always address it proactively.
Okay. And they've already been notified, the people that are that close?
Correct. For you, the public hearing process, and I believe there may be some residents here this evening, at least they indicated they might be here tonight.
Okay. The only other question I had, and I didn't write it down, so if it's in there, I apologize. When they start getting their incentive, it's after, for the grocery store part, not that, you know, the warehouse is not that exciting for me. I understand the need for it, but the grocery store is when they would pull their incentives, once that's going more than the warehouse, right? I just don't want the warehouse to...
Correct. The project is defined in project completion, so the project is the Pete's Grocery with the attached retail, and then the warehouse as well. That is, the project is defined and what the incentive is supporting.
Perfect. Thank you. We're very excited, though. Everybody can't wait. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Can I say something? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming, Stephanie and Eugene. It definitely has been a long negotiation. It's been enjoyable to go all the back and forth. It's, I do think everyone negotiated what was best at the end of the day for the Village. I appreciate all the hard work you guys did on it. Our staff did an amazing job. We've had some shrewd negotiating. And last, I want to thank Eugene, who most of you just can't see, sitting behind Steve. He was the guy I was hoping we would ask a whole bunch of questions to, but Eugene, I appreciate all your professionalism, and you've been great to work with. Anytime there's been a problem, you know, and Kimberly has contacted Eugene, they're usually able to figure it out fairly quickly. So I appreciate everything your team has done as well. And Melon, he's not here, but throw a shout-out to Melon.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just add that, you know, we're all excited about this project. It's been a long time coming. 300 new jobs is awesome. The revenue this project's going to bring in, I think it's going to be well worth it. You know, it has been a long process, and glad to see it kind of come to an end. So I'll open it up to see if there's any other questions from the Board, from the members down there. Trustee Sullivan, Trustee Brady.
I'm just happy I don't have to go down to 103rd Street anymore.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much, and appreciate all your hard work. Staff did a great job on this, so thanks for hammering it out.
Thank you.
Is there such a motion to move this item to the Board? Thank you, Trustee Galante. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Roll call for item number three. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number 11, receive comments from the public. Any comments? Anyone like to address the Board? There are none. Any written comments? Nothing? Okay, very good. Is there such a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion to adjourn. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.